Good. Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Pintop Lakeside Town Council to order. Vice Mayor Smith is excused this evening on family business. I'd like to invite you to stand, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for the invocation.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ernie?
Father in heaven, oh you have taken the weight of the government on your shoulders in every land all over the world, but you have given us the responsibility and these leaders in front of us, Lord God, the responsibility to make decisions, Lord God, and to do what is best for the community around us. So Father, I just pray that you would give them wisdom, that you would give them wisdom and also the support of this community, Lord God, as we move forward together, Lord God, for your glory, Lord, to just create just an environment, Lord God, around here, Lord, that is just helpful for every person up here. We just give you thanks, Lord God, for this beautiful area that you've given us and again, guide our decisions, guide our steps in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Ernie. Item B on our agenda is called to the public. This is a business meeting of the town council. The town values and welcomes public input. Please address the council as a whole and not as individual council members. Do not address staff or members of the audience. Council action on items brought up and called to the public is limited by the open meeting law. Council may direct staff to study the matter for further consideration at a later date. Items on the agenda will not be heard and individuals are limited to three minutes. Is there anybody that wishes to address us? Okay, seeing none then, we will move on to item C, which is our consent agenda. All items listed are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion of the council. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member requests that. Council members however may ask questions without removal of the item from the consent agenda. Items removed are considered in their normal sequence unless called out of sequence. As you can see tonight, we have one item on our consent agenda. Any discussion questions, council views?
To make a motion.
Of course.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion of second, all in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, that carries unanimously. Item D, business before the council. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been introduced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item either before or after council discussion. Questions from council members however may be directed to staff or a member of the public through the mayor at any time. Item D1 tonight is a presentation and recognition of FBLA students from Blue Ridge Unified School District. I'm going to ask Melena to come up and make these presentations and while she's coming up, I just wanted to say that one of my goals for the future, and we've been working on it with our Mayak kids, is to have a better connection between us and Blue Ridge and really celebrate the successes of our students. Unfortunately, we hear about all the negative things way too often and tonight we have a couple of students that we'd like to recognize and hopefully we'll just continue this pattern going forward. So Melena, thank you.
Yes. Unfortunately, both Chloe and Daniel are not here tonight. However, I did just find out, thanks to Mr. Webb, they're being inducted to the National Honor Society. So I'm pretty sure that that's a great excuse to not be here, but like the mayor said, Chloe, Gorksmith and Daniel Webb recently went to a FBLA competition and both Chloe and Daniel received a first place award for hospitality and event management and then Daniel also received a second place award for client services. And we'll have another one here on one of our future agendas. They actually just did a state competition for FBLA and there were several Blue Ridge students that came away with some significant awards as well, so we'll make sure we recognize them here in the near future as well.
Thank you, Melena, appreciate it and I think Lauren Webb is here, that he could probably take those to the students.
Absolutely.
And thank you for being here and mentoring these young people, we appreciate that, Lauren. Okay, thanks, Melena. And item D2, another wonderful young person here, presentation of Blue Ridge Junior High 4H Engineering and Physics Club, Eco Spartans' efforts toward the conservation, preservation and restoration of our community's natural resources. We have today James Fawcett, if you'd come on up and introduce yourself and we're anxious to hear about this.
So, good evening Mayor Irwin and Town Council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to present tonight. I'm James Fawcett, I'm an eighth grader of Blue Ridge Junior High and this is the Eco Spartans' efforts towards the conservation, preservation and restoration of our community's natural resources. This is presented by the Blue Ridge Junior High 4H Physics and Engineering Club and this was our Samsung Sulfur Tomorrow Project submission. So tonight, for this presentation, I'm going to be going over how it all started, who we are, watersheds, precipitation, stream flow and groundwater. It all started with questions about why Woodland Lake had no water in it. This one single question led us down a rabbit hole of the many problems with our natural resources such as dry springs, algae blooms, surface water quality issues, declining groundwater levels, and that is just a small example of the problems ongoing in our community. Before I start, I want to emphasize that our community boundaries may be small, but these boundaries don't matter when it comes to our natural resources. When someone pollutes upstream of us, it affects us and when we pollute, we affect the community downstream. Some of what I will discuss may not be in the Pintop Lakeside Town boundaries, but there are still issues that affect us. Once we identified all these issues, we decided that our Samsung Sulfur Tomorrow submission and a school year project would be focusing on the following: raising awareness, gaining a better understanding of the various problems and applying solutions. The following are some of the issues we have identified this year. Now, up here on the map, we'll see a little gray box and that is where we are on the map in accordance with our watershed. The arrow indicates the flow direction of water. There are two colors on the map. One is yellow, which is functioning at risk and the other color is green, which is functioning properly. The other color not pictured here is red, which is impaired function. Our watershed is currently functioning at risk, which means that if we do not start implementing measures to reduce pollutants and preserve, restore and protect our natural resources, our watershed could stop functioning properly. Our watershed is upstream from other watersheds in our area. If our watershed becomes impaired, the others around us will be affected by our status and the whole area may be impacted. Furthermore, our local economy is boosted by tourism from the lakes, fishing and hunting. If our water quality continues to degrade, those economic draws will disappear. Furthermore, we are already seeing impacts which have affected our lakes. Rainbow Lake has an exceedance of pH, nitrates and phosphorus, leads to excessive aquatic plants and algae. Scott Reservoir has high mercury levels, so the ADEQ recommends that adults and children limit their consumption of fish. This is a graph of precipitation at Arizona Game and Fish Station. Shown here is the amount of rainwater at the Arizona Game and Fish Station. As you can see, the intensity and frequency of the big participation events is decreasing and the amount of water we're getting from those events is decreasing as well. This is the only United States Geological Survey stream gauge in our region. As you can see, the intensity and frequency of the discharge or stream flow is decreasing. This is an overview of the wells drilled and permitted in our community. The bigger blue dots represent the wells that the Department of Water Resources monitor. There are two important aquifers in our community, the shallow Pintop Lakeside Aquifer and the deeper Coconino Aquifer. This graph here is based on data from the Department of Water Resources. The water levels in the Pintop Lakeside Aquifer are declining, which likely has been a factor in spring flow discharge decreasing or ceasing altogether. This also affects public supply wells and domestic wells that are in this aquifer. We have heard stories of shallow wells going dry but have not surveyed or quantified how many. This is the graph of water levels in one of the supply wells for Arizona Water that is in the Coconino Aquifer. Water levels are steady, which is really good for a secure water future. However, as the people utilizing the shallow aquifer begin to deepen wells or connect to community supply wells that are in the Coconino, we could possibly see a decline in water levels. Although things appear to be going in the wrong direction in our watershed, there is hope. We are fighting for a better future by identifying issues and formulating a plan. During this year, we have focused on and have accomplished the following: learning about groundwater and surface water relationships, we learned how to take water level measurements, we learned where to find important data such as the precipitation data I presented this evening, and we learned how to graph it in Excel and interpret trends. We have also built orb sensors and are currently working on programming them. This is an inexpensive way to monitor surface water quality to alert us if the nutrient load in our streams is too high. We have brought experts in to help us understand the various issues in our community and ways to resolve them. We have branded our project and turned it into a mission to fight for our community's natural resources. And working with the town of Pintop, we are actively in the process of setting up a surface water and weather station site at the covered bridge at Woodland Park. At this site, we will have real-time telemetry that will monitor temperature, precipitation, discharge of Walnut Creek, and through a generous donation from Geotech and Nsitou, we will also be monitoring the pH, conductivity, temperature and dissolved oxygen of the water coming into Woodland from Walnut Creek. I believe that we can come together to preserve, protect and conserve these wonderful resources for your generation, my generation and the next generation to come. As a capstone of our year of work, we are hosting a White Mountains Earth Day Festival in conjunction with the town of Pintop Lakeside. We hope you can all join us to learn about the many entities... Oh, sorry. We hope you can all join us to learn about the many entities working hard at protecting these resources and the fascinating work that we all have done and are still doing. I want to give a special thank you to the following people. Kevin Woolridge, our club advisor, Sada Chudnoff, our project advisor, Annie DeRosier, who came in and helped us not only brand our club, but come up with our mission and created some really cool logos for us, Matt Patterson, who has been not only very supportive of the club, but has paved the way for us to work with the town on monitor and surface water, Dan Grubner, who has been very active and supportive of this club and helped me with his presentation, John Reese, who helped me with his presentation and helped me navigate the US Forest Service Resources on watershed work. I would also like to say thank you to all the entities participating in the Earth Day Festival, the town of Pintop Lakeside, the US Forest Service, Arizona Game and Fish, Arizona Water, Pintop Lakeside Sanitation District, Zdig, Arizona Geological Survey and the White Mountain Nature Center. And I would once again like to thank Geotech and Nsitou for their donation to help us with surface water quality monitoring. Do you have any questions?
I think this is amazing, James. I don't know if everybody knows, but I manage and work with all the water districts up here essentially and I think this is an area of grave concern for us. Is it possible for us to get your presentation, especially the maps, so that I can see a little bit better?
Yeah, I believe that one of the tech people over there have the presentation.
I personally would be really interested in seeing where all those wells are and that endangered area, the yellow and the green. This is amazing.
Yeah, I don't remember the name of the website, but it was this really cool interactive site where you could click on any watershed and you could get all the data for it.
Okay, well, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Counselor Watson?
So, you're in eighth grade?
Yes.
That's amazing. I look forward to seeing you in high school, in college, in whatever life brings you. Very good job.
And when you become president.
Thank you.
Thank you, I agree with those comments. How long is... I'm sorry. Yes.
I was wondering, maybe you could introduce Sarah. She's helped to spearhead and bring this to their attentions and she's a fairly new resident of Pintop Lakeside.
Would you like to say, introduce yourself, Sarah, come on up? Don't go away, James.
I'm Sada Chudnoff, I'm a hydrogeologist and a registered professional geologist and we relocated almost a year ago from Payson. My husband works for the Apache State Greaves and I do some consulting work, but I'm very passionate about groundwater, groundwater education and you know, when we saw this whole Woodland Lake thing, it was like, wow, let's see what we can, you know, explore and this community has been awesome and supportive and it's been a lot of fun and I'm really excited about the event on Saturday and excited to get this monitoring site up at Woodland. I think it's going to be really cool and have that real-time telemetry and another weather station in our community, so look forward to exploring more of the issues and hopefully the ways we can resolve these in the community. So, thank you.
Thanks for your help with these young people and welcome to our community. Yeah, anything else? How long does the event on Saturday last?
It's...
Ten to one.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's ten to one?
Ten to one, yeah.
All right. Thank you, this is wonderful. We appreciate you and congratulate you guys on all the work that you've been doing. So, thank you for being here tonight, James.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, item D3 is Consider Resolution Number 22-1613 and Council Decision Request Presented by Town Manager Keith Johnson to authorize the hiring of Kristy Salzkopf as Town Clerk. We do have this set up for potential executive session, I'm not going to read it unless there's a council member that would like us to... Thank you, I will turn it over to you then, Keith.
Okay. To council members, Ms. Salzkopf began working for the town of Pintop Lakeside in June of 2020 in the Town Clerk's office as the assistant to the Town Clerk. Over time, she was given additional responsibilities in the HR department and also as cemetery administrator. That's probably the hardest job of them all right there. That's a, that can be an emotional job and helping people through a challenging and trying time in their lives and she's done very, very well there. In September 2020, well, that happened in September of 2020, in June 21, she was promoted to the Town Clerk and continued with HR responsibilities and as a cemetery administrator. In February of 22, she was asked to assume the interim Town Clerk responsibilities. One thing about Kristy is that wherever there's been a need, wherever there has been, you know, a hole or anything that needed to be done, Kristy was always willing to jump in. She didn't always know how to do it, but she was a person to get in there and to figure out how to get it done and has helped us out immeasurably over these last couple of years. She has enough credits at this time to apply for the Certified Municipal Clerk designation, so we'll be doing that very quickly. And just so everybody knows, not every clerk for every community up here has a certified clerk and so we've always been blessed to have certified clerks and to get their additional designations. In July, she'll attend classes for the Elections Clerk, so she'll be able to apply for that one. So, she's on a speed course and has been working very hard over the last two years to get all of the training that she needed to. And we've shifted some of the HR responsibilities, we moved to Stacy and she's been helping out, big thumbs up there, but she'll still continue with some of those responsibilities too. So, I bring her before you tonight and recommend that she be appointed as the Town Clerk for Pintop Lakeside.
Any questions, comments? Counselor Craig?
I'd like to make the...
Go right ahead.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 22-1613, appointing Kristy Salzkopf as Town Clerk in accordance with Arizona Revised Statute, Section 9-237.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion of second, further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, that carries unanimously, Kristy, thank you. We welcome you to your official position even though you've been doing it for a while and we appreciate you, appreciate you. Would you like to introduce your family?
My husband, John Salzkopf, is here and Uncle James Salzkopf, sitting right in front of him, and then my parents, Steve and Nancy Brimhall.
Thank you guys for being here tonight. Anyway, thanks, Kristy.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on then to item D4, which is reports from our council committee liaisons and the Town Manager. Let's start with Counselor Snitzer.
Okay, thank you Mayor. I've got three groups to talk about, I'll start with tracks. We've resumed our trail work. Early on, we start on the west side of Sholo, so we've been doing the Chihuahua Pines Trail because that's less muddy and then come June, it's kind of warm over there, so we move over here as, you know, spring turns into summer. We had a tool sharpening party this last weekend to get all our tools tuned up and we do that once or twice a year, just makes the trail work a little easier and a little more productive. And right now, we're working on getting approval for a new trail, a shortcut trail up on Blue Ridge. The Blue Ridge Trail is, you know, it's around Blue Ridge Mountain, it's about a nine mile trail and that's a little long and so we're going to get, we got grant money to help pay for creating a shorter loop trail, so people that wanted to just do a three to five mile hike could do it. So, that approval is slow, but it's coming along. The Forest Service has to approve everything and then has to do NEPAs and studies to make sure we're not disturbing anything, so I look for that to happen later on this year though. At the Nature Center, we've resumed our program, some of you, if you haven't been, please check it out. We've had some evening programs, some really, really great programs. It's, you know, we've been almost shut down for two years, so we're starting to kick things back into motion. We have nature hikes, we have Saturday events that are perfect for kids, we've got evening events that are great for adults, so please check it out. And some of you may know, we're working on a bird show and it'll be, you know, where they have raptors and they, you know, raise these raptors and well, they buy them as babies and train them, it takes two years to train a bird and then they give exhibitions. Right now, excuse me, they have an owl, a red-tailed hawk and a crow and we're looking for more volunteers to get involved in it. I'm one of the volunteers, I go in on Sunday afternoon and when I go into the crow's pen, I take a bucket with me and the crow's pen, they give it toys to play with and paper to tear up, so when I go in there, that pen is like a giant mess, but the crow then will come and take everything, pick it up and put it in the bucket because she's been trained to recycle, so that's cool. They're working on getting an aplamato falcon. This is a special project, those are native to Arizona, but very, very rare because their habitat has been destroyed and some people are trying to reintroduce them to their native habitat in Arizona, so the first thing is you've got to, you know, plant some yucca bushes and then you can introduce the birds and by having an aplamato falcon at the Nature Center and participating in these shows, we can show people, it's a beautiful, beautiful bird and we can show people what it is and maybe get some support. And our grant money was just approved, but the bad news is our construction cost came in massively higher than we had planned and so we're recovering from that, but we also fortunately got a donor who's making, who's already given us about $60,000 and has promised us about another $150,000 to make this happen. So, we've got a $400,000 budget right now that will include building an amphitheater, which will be a tremendous asset to the town. And then the last thing is talking about the Rainbow Lake group and we've been talking with the irrigation company, trying to work with them constructively. The issue is that they look at irrigation as the purpose of Rainbow Lake and Sholo Lake and all these, their irrigation impoundments. The problem with that is that if we're going to hang on to that water, we need to show beneficial use and giving irrigation water to a handful of people doesn't do the job. You need to show more beneficial use than that and recreation is a beneficial use. So, we're working with them on that. A separate support group has been formed in the shores and they've hired an attorney to try and find out ways to raise money and support the irrigation company better. And one of the interesting things, and you're going to hear more about this from me if nobody else, the carp that were introduced in Rainbow Lake have almost eliminated the weeds and that's typical, they've over-controlled the weeds, but the problem is now, it's great, you throw a lure in, you don't get weeds, but there's no habitat for fish and baby fish in places for them to hide and game and fish even stock, here's a tip, they stock extra-large fish in Rainbow Lake when they stock because the pike are predators of rainbow trout and they have no place to hide. If you remember, in Woodland Lake, when it was drained, we put in these structures called Georgia cubes and they're about, I don't know, four feet by four feet by four feet and it's made out of PVC pipe and this black plastic pipe and it's habitat for fish and so the thought was, could we reintroduce, could we introduce Georgia cubes in Rainbow Lake to improve the fishery? And that's an opportunity for us, I mean, it benefits us as a town to have that, a better fishery. Game and fish can't do that because there's a lot of bureaucracy involved and luckily, somebody asked the question, what if somebody else were to, you know, buy some Georgia cubes and stick them in the lake? And the answer was, if the irrigation company would accept that, go for it. So, there's another project for us to get the irrigation company to agree to that, it basically doesn't interfere with anything they're doing, so they should agree. And then we're going to be somehow raising some money to get some Georgia cubes to put them in Rainbow Lake and improve that as a fishery and an asset to the town, so it's, there's a lot of stuff going on, you know, when you think about it. What is that? Oh, the picture of a Georgia cube. Oh, and one other thing, I almost forgot, the carnival, the Nature Center sponsors the Spring Carnival, it's coming Memorial Day weekend, they've got two or three new rides. The third ride is being built in Czechoslovakia, it's actually built, but there's a war going on and they can't ship it. So, it's funny, we're, you know, you see... So it's, it's funny, we're, you know, you see these effects of this war in Ukraine all over, but anyway, please come to the Spring Carnival on Memorial Day weekend. Tickets are for sale here at the town and the library and at the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Snitzer. I believe you're one of the busiest retired people I know. Council Watson?
No, no report at this point.
Okay, thank you. Council Heiser?
I attended the Humane Society Board Meeting. Several items on the agenda, but the highlights were, they elected a new board member, I believe it was Kellen Nichols. They also hired a new director at the Humane Society, which was Dan Allen, and he'll be working with the current director for some time to help get his feet under him. There was several concerns that their, the shelter itself is pretty full, and there aren't very, very many shelters in the state that have any space, so it sounds like currently they're working with Lake Havasu to move some of the animals over there. Sounded like they secured a building for the Happy Tales Event in July and August, and there were some discussions about potentially renegotiating contracts with the different entities that they work with to bring animals to them. That's pretty well it?
Busy group. Thank you. Council Buse?
I attended the Blue Ridge School Board Meeting this week. Hopefully, most of you got to see the Beauty and the Beast. It was a huge success. As Dr. Wright said, they were very proud of all the participants, and I, having lived here many years and seen many of the productions there, I would say this is the, the best I've seen. And at the school board meeting, they recognized several community members who participated in helping with that, from, from a contractor who, who put together the sets, people doing the sound, stage director, dance, props, costumes, someone working with the soloists, and I understand two of the individuals had never sung prior to that performance, so it was, it was very good, and we appreciate all of that as a community, as I know the school does. They also mentioned there that the band recently got the second highest ratings at a competition that they attended, so, Blue Ridge High School Band. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out to, there'll be more dual enrollment classes with, with NPC coming up, and actually, it'll be possible for seniors to graduate not only from high school, but also graduate with an associate's degree as seniors when they're graduating, so. It was brought up too, that Blue Ridge students in college graduate at three times the rate of those from surrounding high schools, so I think Blue Ridge is doing a good job, and we appreciate Mr. Webb and those who are, participate with that. My understanding is staffing is on track. I know there's still some positions to be filled, but I think it's on, on track there. Also, something interesting, Dr. Wright is putting together a committee of parents and community members to, for a sex education committee regarding sex, sex education in the schools, which he assured everybody there that will start at the sixth grade level, which is what it historically has. It won't be younger than that. But anyway, the first committee for the, meeting for those who are interested would be April 26th at 5:30 in the district boardroom, so, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Council Buse. Council Craigbaum?
I have no report.
Okay. I just have a couple things. The Blue Ridge Scholarship Golf Tournament is April 30th at White Mountain Country Club. We still have openings for golfers, so if you're interested, please go to our website and sign up. And I would just like to give some thanks to all the, all of our staff members and their spouses who made the Easter egg party picnic such a huge success. That was just amazing event. I think all the, the families and the children and the grandparents, everybody that was there really had a good time. And I would also like to commend Matt and Malena and their crew for all the work that's going on at Mountain Meadows. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to get over there, but the soccer fields are starting to look like soccer fields again. It's really, really made a huge difference, and those will be, I think, buttoned up in the next couple of weeks, so we appreciate all your hard work on that. Keith, I probably stole some of your thunder, huh?
Nope. Nope, you're good, you're good. Vice Mayor Jerry Smith asked me if I would let everybody know that the Senior Center has a new name. It's the White Mountain Community Center, so you can follow them on Facebook. I looked it up, and it is, it is official. Also, to remind you that tomorrow morning, we're having a highway cleanup, an ADOC cleanup at 8:00 AM. We're meeting here, and Tony's, I'd like to thank Tony for arranging that. It's, you know, it's, it's a good thing for the community to see us out there working along the highway together, so. Also, if you want to get a little more exercise tomorrow, we have a 5K. We've been invited to participate in a Navajo County Health Day at Woodland Lake Park at noon, so three laps around the lake, and this is National County Government Month for the month of April, and that's their goal. They've, they're going around to several communities and organizing and having, sponsoring these 5K walks, so we encourage you to come out. We have about eight to 10 so far that, of our employees are gonna be there, so encourage you to come out.
Do we have to sign up for that, or can we just be there?
Just be there.
Okay.
We'll sign up when we're there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The wind will blow you in, on one side of the lake in the right direction, so, yeah.
Can't control it, right?
Can't.
Okay. Well, there being no further business tonight, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.